Okay, aloha, welcome to the Neighborhood Board Five, Kaimuki, Diamond Head, Kapo Hulu, St. Louis Heights, you get that right? No, we're not Kaimuki, I'm sorry, I have Kaimuki on my mind. Kapo Hulu, Diamond and St. Louis Heights, Neighborhood Board Five, June 13th meeting, we'll call it to order. And if we could, Mr. Dillon, we have, I just want to say that we have a big mahalo to you for the work that you've done to our board, and we are sad that you're leaving, but happy that you're training Camelia. Is it Epa? Can I say Gomez or Gomez? Gomez, okay, so welcome, Camelia, who will be our new Neighborhood Assistant. Could you do a roll call for us?
All right. Okay. Roll call, Allen?
Here.
Beardo? David? David?
I see him there, he's just on mute. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Decker? Posino?
Yeah.
Khan?
Here.
Knight?
Here.
Mattson? Murchy?
Here.
Velasco?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Witzel?
Here.
Wong? Bruce Wong? Linda Wong? Okay.
Yeah, I see Linda.
Okay, we have Ten, we have Quorum?
Thank you. We do have one board vacancy for Diamond Head Sub District Three. Is there anyone in person or online who is interested in filling that position? Seeing not, we will move on to, so let your neighbors and friends know that we do have a district in the Diamond Head area. For public safety reports, we invite our Honolulu Fire Department Waikiki Station.
Hi, good evening, hello everybody, my name is Ellen Tanaka, I'm a fire captain here at the Waikiki Fire Station on Engine Seven, Second Platoon. I have firefighter one Levi Gois to read off our monthly statistics for May. Hello, everyone. So like Cap said, I'm going to be reading the Honolulu Fire Department Neighborhood Board Report, and this is for June 2024. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographical area for the previous month. Should you have any questions, please email the HFD Community Relations Office at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So the incident statistics for May 2024 are as follows. For fires, we had two structure fires. We had zero wildland or brush fires. We had three nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and four activated alarms with no fire. For emergencies, we had 74 medical, zero motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, four motor vehicle crash collision, one mountain rescue, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous material incidents. Then for our fire safety tips and announcements, the fire safety tip is power outages. Hawaii is fire prone with a year-round risk of wildfire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, which is June 1st to November 30th, will increase the risk. The HFD encourages everyone to proactively protect themselves, your family, and your property through advanced planning, understanding, and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. One, build a 14-day disaster supply kit. Take an inventory of the items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs, examples, devices, refrigerated medicines. The general list is available online at honolulu.gov/dem. Using appliances during power outages, this is number two, using appliances during power outages. Avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, camp stoves, or charcoal grills should always be used outdoors and at least 20 feet away from windows. Turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips and detailed information, visit ready.gov/power-outages. Starting July 1st, Hawaiian Electric Company will commence their Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program to reduce the risk of wildfire. As preemptively, wait, sorry, as one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, Hiko may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of forecasted high winds and dry conditions. This program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. If PSS could last several hours or up to several days, the HFD and Hiko will continue to work with Board of Water and other cities, state, and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from a PSS. Visit hawaiinelectric.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, and are there any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department Waikiki Station in person? Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for coming and presenting that. I have a quick question about the high-wind power outages. How do you know if your area is going to be the area without power preemptively?
In regards to the Hawaiian Electric power outage, as far as them shutting it down, it's still in infancy stages, we're still getting more information on that. I don't know how they're going to be determining where they're going to be shutting down and when. Yeah.
Thanks.
And are there other questions in person or online for Fire Department?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. How does the Fire Department feel about the fireworks ban at the City Council?
I don't know our position on that. Well, it's, you know, fireworks causes fires and, and, yeah, I guess if they're going to ban fireworks, then that's going to reduce our number of fires that we go to.
Right. Are they supposed to move the spots around? I mean, can people do sparklers and stuff on the street? Or is it a designated area? Do you know that?
No, I don't. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the ban currently and what's been being worked on. Apologize, I can get that information for you next one.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? We have had some questions about the exact locations of brush fires that have been on Diamond Head on the Maoko Makai side of the monument or the park. Would it be possible to have a map that shows the locations of those fires and the dates they occurred at our next meeting?
You know, I can, I can actually, I know it's been a question from the Neighborhood Board, especially for for this past several weeks, so it's been ongoing. We have a website that actually provides some of this information. Would it be possible, if you have the time, I can share my screen and I can, I can actually go over our website with you and the public and maybe show where that mapping system is on our website.
Does it give the exact locations on the mountain where the fires were?
Uh, yeah, it gives you locations for all our incidents, and it gives you some information about the incident, the date, time, location, and then you can go and request information in regards to requesting for a report, the actual fire report that was registered with our captains and with our companies. So a lot of that information is available. There's a process for release of information. I myself, even if I'm doing the report, I can't just release that information without it going through a process of our department. But we do have a mapping system on our website that actually shows you all of our incidents, basically, and information as far as date, time, and location.
Okay, I've seen the reports that happen, and it gives a location in general, but not like the specific, and I might not be looking in the right place, a specific point if it's here or there, you know, 200 meters from Diamond Head Lighthouse, you know, towards Kahala or whatever. But maybe what you could do is if you have access to the chat, put the link there in the chat of that map, and then we can have time to look at that and get back to you as well with other questions before our next meeting.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll put the link for that in the chat.
Okay, thank you very much, and stay safe.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to the Honolulu Police Department District Six, Waikiki Kapilani Park, Diamond Head.
Skip fish chair, this is Daisy, I have a question for the Fire Department.
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead Daisy.
Yeah, you know, with all the fires regarding the lithium batteries, there was a big, huge one in Kalahi with that electric bicycle or moped shop. How, what kind of safety things have been done by the city? I don't know if it's Fire Department, or if it's the Police Department or the city, because a lot of these are happening. So it does cause a strain on the Fire Department for all these different things, you know, some of the house fires are caused by the electric bicycle with the lithium battery overheating, etc. So how about the safety factors for these would help? Thank you.
Lithium batteries are a big concern. They're more abundant nowadays in a lot of items that we have, and they do catch on fire, and there is a concern of that, and they're difficult to actually put out. So like, you know, just be cautious about when you're charging your batteries, especially if you have large lithium batteries, such as bicycles or other large items that have larger lithium batteries, even like laptops and stuff, as far as when you're charging them, just be attentive to their needs. That's pretty much all I can say, aside from getting rid of any damage or lithium batteries that are showing some compromise or issues as far as bulging or overheating.
Thank you. And with that, thanks Daisy, let's move on then to our District Six Police Report.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Lieutenant Shepherd Jones with Waikiki District Six. I'm just filling in for Lieutenant Arita today, he's on vacation, he'll be back for you guys next board meeting. So I'll go into the statistics for you guys. So this is going to be for the month of May 2024. For that month, we had two robberies, 14 burglaries, 155 theft cases, 19 unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, which vehicle break-ins, 40 assaults, eight sex crimes, seven bicycle or skateboard on sidewalk type incidents, three speeding, 1,925 parking citations, 16 loud muffler and war privated noise citations, 51 park closure type citations, and overall, we had 4,631 unique calls for service. So that's the statistics for the month of May. I can take any questions at this time.
District Six, Arlene?
Yes, do you cover the area around Diamond Head where the female locker was attacked?
So that's actually going to be our, my colleague from East Honolulu, he'll be touching on that when his turn comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, questions online for District Six? I think Amanda's put something in the chat there, so, okay, seeing none, thank you very much for coming out today. And we'll move on to District Seven, Diamond Head, Kapo Hulu, St. Louis Heights, East Honolulu Police Department Report.
Hi, good evening, Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven, East Honolulu. The following are the statistics for the month of May 2024. Motor vehicle theft, 14, burglary, six, theft, 23, UEMV, eight, with total calls for service, 6,450. With regards to the Diamond Head sex assault suspect, that suspect was identified, arrested, and charged. I believe that was over the weekend or over the last few days. That individual was charged for sex assault as well as robbery. And if there are any further questions, I can take those questions right after this. The safety tip of the month is preventing auto thefts. We've been seeing auto thefts a little bit on the rise. So please, to prevent auto theft, turn off your engine and lock your vehicle, even if it's parked at home for any amount of time. So make sure that your keys are also secure. Don't leave your keys hidden anywhere on the vehicle. Don't leave the engine running and the car unattended, even if you're going to be away for a few minutes. And please, don't leave any important documents in the car, for example, the title to the vehicle. But with that, that's our report for the month, thank you.
Oh, thank you, are there questions?
Yes, I have two questions. You said not to have the title of the vehicle in the car. Does that include car registration or just the title?
Yeah, that would be just the title, and the reason for that is there are, there have been incidents where a person, a suspect, will take your car or somehow gain access to that title, and then they'll fraudulently use it to change the ownership of the car into their name or to somebody else's name. And then that's very, very difficult to try and resolve. So as a car owner, that would just be a total nightmare for you if you're ever to lose control of that title.
All right, thank you. I have a question about the patrol of the Diamond Head Beach area where that woman was attacked. Do you have any active patrol either on a bicycle or on ATV that can patrol that area during the day?
Yes, we do have, we don't currently have any bicycle units in that area, but we do have ATV units that do patrol the area. Due to the difficulty in accessing the actual beach area, of course, that will be limited, of course, and we try to do the best that we can. But we do have patrols in that area, yes, as well as the regular officers on patrol.
I would recommend that the city invest in a ramp from Cromwell's Beach. It wouldn't be that difficult to put a ranch to have access to ATV. That area is very remote, and it's used a lot by tourists, and I'm afraid that it's not very well secured.
And of course, if there's any type of concern, suspicious activity or criminal activity in that area, please don't hesitate and call 911, and we will get officers there quickly to respond.
I believe some of the areas along that stretch, there is no service, so it would be, it might be worthwhile. I know in the beaches in San Diego, there's ATV patrol officers frequently up and down the beaches during the busy summer hours.
Thank you for the suggestion, I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for District Seven? Okay, and seeing none, then thank you, officer, for coming tonight. We will move on to the Board of Water.
Thank you very much.
Why, is there, oh, okay, I, go ahead.
Oh, hi, I'm Stephen Norstrom from the Board of Water Supply, and for the month of June, for actually May, there were no main breaks to report. Our announcement this month is the Board of Water Supply is working hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink. So each year, we conduct thousands of tests on the water sources and distribution system to ensure that the municipal water meets or exceeds all federal and state drinking water standards, and those reports will be shared to you in your homes before July, as they'll be arriving in the mail, and if you live in a condo, it goes to your association. So you can actually pull that report on our website at boardofwatersupply.com. And Kathleen did provide me an update on the fence, so I just wanted to provide a quick update on that. They did start prep work for the painting of the fence this week. They'll start painting on Friday, tomorrow through June, and they'll also start the installation for the temporary irrigation for some new landscaping. So that was the quick update that she did provide me. Thank you.
Thank you, and questions for our Board of Water Supply representative?
This is Arlene, I have a quick question. Are you involved with the board that was dissolved recently about the Red Hill water situation?
I am not sure, I don't believe so, but I can follow up on that for you and have Kathleen report next month.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yeah, you're very welcome, thank you.
Okay, and with KCC, I see Dean Hoshiko?
Good evening, Chair Welsh, board members and honored guests, please excuse my, I have a frog in my throat today. I have a few slides I would like to try and show, but if they don't show up, I did want to note that the Neighborhood Assistant did post those on your site. So if I can please be given access to share screen, I can show you what I have. Can you see it?
Hey Carol, yeah, do you have the share screen function on the, it should be on the bottom of your screen, maybe next to your video. Everyone should have it, it's public.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
Well, it's a good learning lesson, let's share screen for you.
Okay.
And also, just for folks at home who want to look at this now or later, it is in the Google Drive that is at the top of the meeting agenda, as well as all the other posted materials for, that we received for the meeting and every meeting.
Can you see it now?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're, I don't know if we're double sharing or what, but
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, all right. There's been a lot of progress made at the Culinary Institute Instruction Phase Two. The stormwater detention chamber has been completed, and the restaurant windows are completed and they passed testing. The restaurant interior is 80% complete. The auditorium interior is 90% complete. The site work is 80% complete, and actually the contract work is supposed to be complete by December 30th of 2024. So unfortunately, that doesn't mean that the restaurant is going to be open on, at the end of the year, it sounds like the restaurant will be open by about March. But I did want to let you know that, and I'll stop sharing screen right now. And I want to let you know that on the 27th of this month, there'll be a press conference, a joint press conference between the Culinary Institute of America and the Culinary Institute of the Pacific. There is going to be a collaboration between the two, and they will announce what type of programming will be done and collaboration, so watch for that. And your chair should have received an announcement about that and an invitation. So hopefully, if you have any questions or you want to see more of the pictures, please take a look at your site. I hope I sent you the most current photographs. If it looks like maybe it was an earlier version, let me know, and I can send some additional photos to you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. I think you probably shouldn't be talking too much more, your voice is already straining. Are there any important questions for Carol that you can't wait for a while, or that maybe we could put in the chat and you could chat and answer? I was specifically interested in the windows, and if they are, and maybe you could just chat the answer, if they are non-reflective, I know we talked about that, and also, is there a way to keep the birds from smashing into them? That's, I don't know if that's a feature that's built in, or if it's just like a reality that we got to face, but those are just a couple of questions I had. If there's any other questions that don't require Carol to talk, maybe you can just put those in the chat. Okay, Noella?
I'll answer in the chat if that's okay. I'm losing my voice, thank you.
Absolutely, yep. And Noella, can you put a question for Carol in the chat as well?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Carol, don't talk, because maybe Winston can answer the question. But when you were showing your slides, and I think everybody saw them, but what I was getting was a beautiful coastline of what looked like Northern California. I didn't see the slides, and that might be a technical issue on my end, but I don't know, did anybody else see that? Or did you all see slides?
I saw the coastline only and nothing to do with KCC.
That's right.
Well, when she started it, that's all I saw, and I've never seen it. So, okay, it might be on my end, I'm not a techie, but I was, I thought, wow, that's really pretty, she's showing this beautiful northern coastline. Then I was waiting for the slides, and I couldn't
No slides, there were no Okay. Okay, apparently there's a sharing problem, so my apologies for that, but I do encourage you to go to the site and take a look at the photos there.
Thank you.
Okay, and if we got the wrong one uploaded, we'll re-upload that, and you can look at it later, as well as Carol said that she'll send an announcement about the press release to us, so we can upload that in our Google Drive as well for the next month, so good place to check back for information. Well, thank you, Carol, I hope your voice, just don't talk, okay? Thank you for coming tonight. So we've been promising candidates forum, forum, fora, and it looks like we have been fortunate to have PBS Insights as well as Civil Beat will both be holding separate candidate forums for House District 20, which is the seat that's being vacated by Bert Kobayashi. So I don't think that we will need to be able to do that, but we can always do something later. For example, even if it's just informal, maybe before the next meeting in July we have here, maybe we could invite folks out here at 5:30 with the candidates, for those people that want to show up. I don't know, we can talk about that later, but just an idea that we could do something informal. But I do encourage you to look at PBS Insights, and maybe one of our candidates tonight will tell us when the PBS Insights show is going to be, as well as the Civil Beat, or I'm sure that it's online. But if not, or you want to give a shout out to that under our Community Concerns, we would welcome that. So with that, we can move on to Community Concerns. This is for testimony regarding issues that are not listed on this agenda. So are there any community concerns in person here that we can address first? Okay, seeing none, online, let's move, I see Linda.
We were going to have a town hall meeting with the candidates at our Neighborhood Board. So, I mean, we could do that in July, or whenever we have time. I would like to talk about it and schedule it if possible.
Okay, well, you know, I will contact the candidates and see, they, I think are, you know, I suggested to Kaimuki and Kahala as well that we join together. So that might be something that they're interested in, maybe they feel that they won't have enough exposure with the public to get out their messages, and maybe not everybody wants to be on a forum. You know, it's up to them, but that's something that we can regroup with, with the candidates, perhaps after they have their PBS Insights and my gosh, Civil Beat shows on and there, and see how that goes, and we can go from there and see if that's something that we'd like to do before then, but until then, you know, not enough candidates go back to me to make it worthwhile at this point, and it went out about the same time as those other shows, that will probably get some really good play, but if that's the case, I was just going to tell people, check back to our website, and if it's something that's going to happen, we'll post it somewhere in there for the next meeting, that there will be a time and a place, and we do have venues offered for that, if that's a route that we wish to go. We would also put an announcement in the paper and other places, a press release that just says that we would have a candidate forum, and I think we put that in the Neighborhood News as well. But I think ballots go out about the middle of July, so, you know, our next meeting is going to be the, is it the 14th or something like that, the 11th, so, you know, it's possible that we have a, you know, a meeting right after that, you know, on the following, before people start voting, you know, in the next few days after that. But in the meantime, watch PBS Insights and Civil Beat, and I'm sure there's a place where you can watch PBS Insights and Civil Beat and I'm sure there's a place where you can ask questions as well and submit them in advance at this time. Okay, and I see another hand up. I see a gentleman there and I don't see your name. Carl. Carl, did you have a question for us? Oh, you're on mute. If you hold your spacebar. Okay, I know.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hi, Aloha Board. I am sorry for the confusion. Um, I have two bicycle events to announce if, is, if this is the right time.
Uh, sure, go ahead.
I, I have one on August twenty-fifth. It's Dick Evans Memorial Road Race. Uh, it is the road race on bicycles that goes around the island. Uh, as far as Diamond Head in the area, we don't affect too much because we'll come through, through, uh, with a police escort at like six o'clock in the morning. So it'll be a very short window because it'll be probably a two or three window. That's August twenty-fifth. It starts at five forty-five in Hawaii Kai, comes through town to Kunea and then around the rest of the island. But it only affects this area for a few minutes, about six o'clock in the morning on, probably about six o'clock on the twenty-fifth of August. Um, do you have any questions or any concerns you can, I can answer for you?
Do you want to tell us about the other one? As well?
Oh, definitely. Um, the second one would be HBO Century Ride. Um, it is a lot more impact on the area because you actually start and finish both at Kapialani Park. Um, but the only road closure will be when they first start the event in the morning just to get everybody out. Coming back, it'll just be like a normal day with a little bit more bikes on the road. Um, do you have any questions about that one also?
Go ahead, Angie.
Um, yes, when is the second event that you just mentioned?
I'm sorry I didn't mention that. That would be September twenty-ninth. And it starts at six fifteen in the morning.
Okay, thanks.
Is that a Saturday or Sunday?
Both of them are on Sundays.
Okay. Other questions in person? Arlene?
Yes, I have a community concern. Um, I've been paying attention to the baby monk seal over at Kamauana Beach. And there was been several incidents where I have witnessed dogs on the beach about twenty feet away from the, the monk seal. And I'm concerned that I saw an officer from DLNR right there. I went up to him and asked him, um, why he wasn't telling the woman to remove her dogs. And he, he did it. So I have a real concern about that. I also have a concern about how the outrigger canoe club conducted themselves in general. They, um, ignored DLNR again. They ignored the marine rescue group, um, personnel that asked them to politely, they were very polite to go around the monk seals that were there. There was like three or four seals at a time. And, um, they refused. So I have a real concern about the behavior of the, that club.
Thank you, uh, Arlene. I'm sure there's relevant laws that could be there, especially with the dogs. I'm, that DLNR is not doing it, call the cops. You know, I mean, it's, uh, after the tragedy of the seal getting killed on the North Shore. Yeah. Um, before we leave that, I, I, I know if there were any questions for Carl. Yes, I want to go back to that. Go ahead, Margaret.
Carl, um, I know you said that there was, you know, minimal impact because of the timing of the races. Issues that I find are that they leave the park, no parking. They put them out the night before and they oftentimes don't take them down until, you know, the evening or the next day. So, um, maybe you could get together with the police or whomever it is that you make arrangements with for the parking because there are a lot of times the events have been, you know, over the day before and you still got no parking. And it's, you know, it's not fair to the people, but on the weekends, put it to the beach. There's.
No, I, I understand completely. First, Dick Evans, we start in Hawaii Kai, so we have no parking in this area. Um, so we don't block off any parking for Dick Evans, which is the one on August twenty-fifth. And for the Century Ride, they don't necessarily block off the parking lot. They just take a lot of it with the people that park there. So there are no street signs or closed signs for the parking in that area for either of the two events that I'm speaking of.
Okay, yeah, just so long as you can just double check that because it really is kind of a, it's kind of a bummer for people wanting to go to the beach with all the parking blocked off. And it's not necessarily your fault. It's just maybe a miscommunication with the police.
Oh, no, I understand. I work for a couple of other events that are responsible for some of those events. Um, I'll mention it to them and hopefully I can help you in a couple of the other events coming up.
Okay, and I see, uh, maybe Linda may have a related question, Carl?
Okay.
Linda, is your hand up just errantly or? Okay. Well, let's circle back to Linda. Is there anybody else who has a community concern? Not listed on this agenda now, David. Okay, Angie has one?
Yeah, I have a community concern, but first, uh, thank you, Carl, for coming and talking about the events. Um, so.
Well, thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, um, my community concern, and I think I've mentioned this a few times, is about the crosswalks that aren't so indicated. Um, unfortunately, last month I got to witness probably a fatal accident um, on Kapialani on one of the crosswalks that we all know all too well. Um, and it kind of highlighted my concern again for Waiala. And also I know over here on Kapahulu.
You're bothering me. Yo, crazy dog, dude.
Okay. Um, no, and it just reminded me of a gentleman that came a few months ago talking about the crosswalk over by Safeway Two on Kapahulu. Um, and so I know there's a lot of people on a lot of different levels of government that can help with this. Um, because a few times we've talked about the speeding that happens around our area. I know Date Street specifically. But again, there's a lot of crosswalks with a lot of high traffic and we're in the summer season now. And so the concern is not so much the students, but there's a lot of tourists and there's a lot of unmarked crosswalks. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Margaret, is your hand still up for something else or?
No, it's still up. I'm not sure that this is the time, but, um, the sidewalk in front of their, nearby the aquarium, I was told not to just put it in the chat, uh, has collapsed. And, uh, it's got, I mean, it's closed off and what's aggravating is it could have prevented because they just recently put up a new fence like a week ago or two weeks ago prior to the whole sidewalk portion collapsing. And so there was ample warning, but I think that state, I'm not sure.
Arlene?
Margaret, um, I remember asking this last month about that area because it's collapsed. And I was concerned about all the rocks and debris going directly into the ocean. We've had really high tides and, uh, strong storm surges. So I'm really concerned, but I haven't, I haven't heard anything. Maybe someone will address that tonight.
Thank you. Okay, and are, are there concerns? Um, yeah, and to Angie's point, I think, um, yesterday, and I, I'm, I hope, uh, that what we can do, uh, Margaret, is, is have a call a public safety committee meeting in the next, uh, couple of weeks about. Uh, yesterday was the, um, release of the, uh, it's, I'm not gonna get it right, but the net zero, uh, traffic safety, no deaths for traffic safety, uh, for especially pedestrians and bicyclists. And it was a presentation from DTS and it is, uh, if you go to the Department of Transportation Services website, uh, that plan is listed there and they're asking for comments to be made sometime by the twenty-something of this month, let's say the twentieth, so that you get it done. Um, it's a draft that talks about complete streets and, uh, speeding and everything. And I printed off a couple of things tonight. Um, here that, uh, it talks, there's some good, well, sad graphs in there that's, that say, you know, um, uh, fifty-three percent of all FSI, which is fatal or serious injury crashes happen at twenty-five miles an hour at the posted speed. Uh, at twenty miles an hour, it's four percent. So that five miles an hour makes a huge, huge difference. And of course, that's the posted speed and we all know that people are, you know, not going the posted speed in many cases, but, uh, the city of Edinburgh did a, uh, twentieth plenty and their death rates and fatal, uh, and serious injuries have plummeted. A lot of neighborhoods are experiencing that. I think it's something worth, worthwhile. Again, it's a graphic that you can see here, of course, if it's higher speeds, um, fatalities and serious injuries are very high in our neighborhood. It's a lot of issues. So maybe we can call the traffic safety that just discusses that plan also as in general with the other aspects of that. Margaret, you got another comment?
Yeah, another issue was, um, it's in Waikiki, but right in front of the One Hotel at Triptonville and there was a big hole in the sidewalk. And they fixed it very quickly. Thank you, Tommy Waters Office. But, but we could see it coming up. I know they're working on the, all the sidewalks. Somebody broke their leg there last week, same place. And it's just, you know, it, it, they really, I, I know it's hard to fix everything, but the way they fix them don't work.
Great, thank you, Margaret. Uh, we've got a pretty quiet crowd tonight, which makes it maybe a little easier for um, our mayor's representative, Mr. Cruckey. Thank you for, oh, we got one more here. Let's see, it looks like Amanda's got a comment or question.
Hi, everyone. Um, I just, I had some information about the aquarium walkway from UH. So, um, I shared that information in the chat. Um, I don't know, it's, I don't know if you want me to read it. The Office of Project Delivery was first notified of the hole in the seawall. Um, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, aquarium personnel blocked off the walkway the same day. Um, OPD had the structural engineer Kai Hoa'i come out the following week to inspect the seawall. Following the investigation, the consultant looked into the type of permits and approvals that were needed. The permits and approvals needed for the seawall repairs are similar to those needed for the aquarium water system upgrades. So they decided to have the consultant, Oceane, was working on the aquarium water system, include the seawall repairs under their contract as the new water system intakes would have been needed anyway in order to, uh, penetrate the seawall. Additionally, they had already started on the environmental assessment and obtaining permits for the in-water work. From the investigation, there was no immediate danger of the walkway collapsing, but the barricades were left in place of an abundance, out of an abundance of caution. No emergency work was required. The seawall design is complete, pending funding currently requested in fiscal year twenty-five for three million dollars. And they did ask for seawall repairs last year, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, but did not receive any funds for the repair. Um, so we can circle back, you know, I don't know if anyone else is here tonight that can sort of follow up on this, but I'm happy to circle back to them for another updated feed.
Thank you, Amanda. And also if you can email Arlene or Angie, uh, if you made any comments in the chat, we couldn't see the chat at that time, um, about the seals or anything that, that was asked before this.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, uh, the aquarium walkway, that's a separate issue as opposed to the, um, Barefoot Cafe walkway right in front of there where the, the sidewalk has collapsed.
Uh, yes, there's also money in the budget for that wa- uh, repair as well in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. I have it on the list to, to mention later in my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Noella, you got something else?
Um, I just, Winston, I just want to clarify, are we still on community concern? Because I just have one.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Really quickly, um, in Kapahulu, right where, um, Rainbow Drive-In is in that side street right next to it, that area, the crosswalk is very faded. And people are having trouble getting across because the drivers can't see it until you're actually going right out over it. So, um, that's a concern of mine because a lot of elderly people, uh, and tourists and everybody else uses it, but you can't see that, that crosswalk. So that's, uh, right, I think it's right in front of that vintage store that sells all the aloha shirts. Thank you very much.
Uh, are you talking, are you talking that crosses across Kapahulu to the park or are you talking about this, uh, parallel to Kapahulu?
Um, if you're standing at Rainbow Drive-In and then you walk out to Kapahulu and you want to cross over to the Alawai Golf Course, it's right there.
And that is, that is one of the problems that we have with DTS that we're going to discuss in Margaret's committee. That is actually that crosswalk was taken away. So technically, and, and we see people darting across her all the time. It is quite dangerous, but technically the nearest crosswalk is here in front of the Chevron Station or is it a Texaco now? And then up at the, um, at Zippy's, right? I mean, that's the, that's the nearest one. So it's, it's an issue of concern.
I did not know that. Thank you very much for clarifying that with me.
I don't think many people do. So thank you, Noella. Okay, and with that, seeing no other community concerns, Mr. Cruckey, thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you, Chair Walsh and other board members. Thank you for having me. Uh, bef- before I move down my report, you know, on that crosswalk, uh, someone called into the Rick Hamada Show, asked the mayor uh, just this about that. So he's gonna respond to that on Wednesday morning. That's from, that's at seven AM. He's on that show. I, I did the show last week when he was out of town, but, um, interesting that came up as well there. So, um, you know, the mayor posts his newsletter each month and it going on. I think the, um, one of the large activities was the creation of the Ocean Safety Department. And, um, and they approved that. And then the, that will actually go as a charter on whether or not it's going to be a department that's an appointed position or it's gonna have a commission that will appoint it. So look for that, uh, being able to vote on that coming up. Um, you know, we've been making improvements to the nine-one-one system and so, uh, the updates are in there for that. Uh, June starts Hurricane Month, so, you know, we, we put information in there for hurricane preparedness and, and hopefully, you know, everyone can do the best they can. Um, you know, it's kind of a confusing issue, but there's HECO's Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program that's talked about in there and, and you know, it, it really is an important thing to understand, especially if you are supported, uh, health-wise with, with something that requires power. And there's a lot of people that are on that list that get, uh, generators from HECO to support that, but there's a waiting list. So you have people that are, that are not registered with HECO, but still have that need. And so really, uh, be knowledgeable about that and, and escalate yourself if, if you feel that you're, that issue is, is really out of sync. And what they do is they're gonna turn off the power in areas and test that. And, and it's preparedness for if you had, as an example, fire like Maui, you could shut the power off. But the way the, the grid works is it takes quite some time to turn the power back on. So it's not like they tested for fifteen minutes and come on. It can be five hours getting it back up, right? And I talk about this while there was a major power outage in, in downtown, uh, today. Um, also, um, we, we did a, a food drive for the White Food Bank and we were very supportive about that. Uh, there's one town hall left and that's at, uh, Waialua, and that's next week. I'm glad it wasn't this week so I could be here tonight to be with you. Um, but it's, it's way up to the North Shore. I don't know if anybody will be coming up there, but they are televised on Olelo. Um, you may have seen it in the newspaper today that we had a, a, a press release on the Laiai Behavioral and Medical Respite. Um, you know, that we, we utilize a space that wasn't being used and, and folks, we could take folks there. Generally, they, um, they may have been picked up right off the street or they came off the street and went into emergency rooms. And then normally they just get released to the street. So that's, it's a great facility, uh, that we're running up there. So far, twenty-two people have been in the program. Um, seventeen are there now and, and they stay inside the, the, the area. Um, but, you know, over time, if, if they can, you know, for people with behavioral problems and medical problems, what they do is, is they can go there and then take the time to recover. And they can also take the time for us to get their documents in order, maybe their insurance in order, and really help them make, make the next move that would be best for them. Um, this is like one of, of a bunch that we're announcing. You're gonna see, uh, more and more come out. Um, I think I have on my, uh, on my desk and my charts about eight hundred rooms that'll be coming online for homeless uh, since January first of this year and the next year, uh, and actually thirteen months. And so of those eight hundred, uh, two hundred and fifty, I'm already done. Um, we also, you might have seen that there's a. We also, you might have seen that there's a pilot going on with cameras in parking lots in some of our tourist areas thefts and such. I think it's a great way to, to address that issue. I don't think we should put everything on the person to say, you got to lock everything up and hide everything and don't take anything with you. It's kind of a sad, you know, statement in, in many ways. But hopefully we can do some law enforcement with those cameras. I, I echo the, the chair's comment about the complete streets and going in and giving feedback. I think you can make a real difference on a long-term basis by giving feedback there. I know we take your comments on a, on a monthly basis and we try to address them. Those are like Band-Aids, right? One at a time piece. But going in and, and giving your thoughts on that, I think would be, would be a great thing to do. In the last meeting, there was a comment about the Kapilani Park sprinklers. And it was like the sprinkler heads were being damaged by the lawn mowers. And DPR says the lawn mowers are not causing the sprinkler damage. Vehicles driving illegally on grass easily do damage sprinkler heads, mainly in the Kalakaua Avenue median. All other sprinkler issues are usually due to wear and usage and they are checked weekly. That's, that's my report for this week. I'm open to any comments and questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Director Cruckey. Are there questions for the director in person? You, Dylan, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so I'll provide a map later just to sort of clarify what I'm talking about. But one of the things that I think we've started to acknowledge a lot more is that right turns on red are very dangerous, both for pedestrians and drivers. And so one of the right turns on red in particular that, you know, I would like to maybe take a look at is the one on Date Street turning onto Kapahulu Ave. Especially because if you're heading in the, from the opposite direction, going down Moheale, and even when you have a dedicated left green, you have about two seconds to make that left turn onto Kapahulu and then immediately try and get into the right lane if you wanted to be in the correct lane to go towards the Alawai Canal and make the turn onto the Alawai. So it's very difficult to make that left turn that you have a green light for and get over into the correct right lane while there are people making quick rights on red. And I just think that that's something that I, that I drive down a lot and it's always hard. And it's probably stressful for other people too. So like I said, I can provide like kind of a pictograph of that to, to explain that a bit more. But basically their request will be to maybe put up a no right on red on the date onto Kapahulu.
No, but I put my email in the chat so that you could send that to me if, and, and I can, I can submit that.
Thank you, Dylan. And Amanda, you're always on the ball. Can you put the link to the DTS zero, zero deaths website in the chat when you get a chance? Thank you. Daisy, you got a question?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Director. My question is, I understand at the Ompo CAC meeting, we're told that there are six incidents of CO2 or carbon monoxide poisoning on the bus, the city bus. Our bus commuter almost every day. So I'm not sure if it was the cleaning solutions used, whether it's that or if the buses are getting older and CO2 has been, you know, sent out. But I understand there are six incidents this year. And I understand it happened also last year. But if that, the OTS and DTS can look into it because it's a very serious issue. So I don't know if the OTS can put in some, the CO2 devices to check the level of the carbon monoxide so that we don't have people getting really sick. Luckily, I don't think anybody passed away, but it would be something that the city would really need to look into because you could have a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And it looks like Linda, is that?
Yes, I can hear you, correct? I'm, want to comment about the intersection of Moheale and Kapahulu that was just discussed. Now, I understand the situation. I was there when they put those lights in. Why block everybody that wants to go right on Kapahulu, which is the most people in the urban core doing that? Why have the people on Moheale coming down to Kapahulu? Why would they get the right of way? You know, it's, it's, you're giving the right of way to the people that are the least most traffic. And I really hate all this. You can't do this, you can't do that. There was a big article in the paper some time ago about Honolulu, the town where you, no right turn, no left turn. Alls you can do is just keep on circulating in a block. You know, you got, you can't do anything. So I'm, let's put another stop sign, let's put another roundabout, let's put another, you know. Now we have that big building going up on Kapilani is the only place we can get out in this area by the beach. The whole area, the only place we can get out is through Kapilani. And now they have that big building going up there of how many flights? And then you can't go down Mahai anymore because they block off the street where they're making that big building. You can't go right on Kapilani from Date Street because they're blocking off lanes because of that big building. So there's no way to escape our area and not have traffic. So, you know, it's just too much. It's put, you know, the offering is put a no right turn, no right turn on date onto Kapahulu. That's where most people go because that's where the residents are. Some obscure residences up on Moheale are just that, the least most people coming down. So, you know, you block, 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 block. I, I'm, I'm really tired of this. You can't do this, you can't do that. You can't get on the freeway at Pecoy. You can't, it's like everybody, so they can circumvent town so they can get on their way to somewhere else. And the people in town are just stuck. You can't do anything except for go around in a circular pattern. You know, I'm, I'm really sick of it.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Dylan?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it's not a no turn. That's not what I'm asking for. It's a no right on red. And that's because the people turning left, they have the priority because they have a dedicated left green. And so you have a dedicated left green converging and colliding with people who don't have the priority because they have a red light and they're just making a right on red out of convenience. But the left turn, but the left turn has the priority in this case.
May I say that when you make that right turn, you stay in the right-hand lane? And when you guys make the left turn, when you're coming from up the hill, you stay in the left lane. There's no conflict.
Well, that may be, and that's a good point for the traffic safety committee that we're going to have. So we can bring those concerns up there. And Angie?
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Chair Walsh said as the initiator of this conversation in today's meeting for bringing it up, that I think that the point has been made that we have wild, not wild, we have a lot of concerns about pedestrian safety and that we definitely need to call that committee meeting and give our testimonies for the, complete the streets. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Linda, for those comments.
Something to say. To, yeah, I am. So same thing, yeah, same thing. I'm echoing with my board member, Angie, the pedestrian crossing in front of Red Elephant Wiley Avenue. I had a very several incident I have seen, specifically there is a no signal in the crossing. So I'm just thinking is, are concerned that any signal we can put there to, you know, for public safety? Because I mean, specifically nighttime, people are crossing. It's very hard to, you know, notify them. So several incident already happened there. So this concern about the traffic signal, can we manage it? City has any plan?
Thank you, Rafia. And a good, another topic, I think there's some, we all know the hotspots around this neighborhood. In front of Leonard's is another place. In front of the Unity Church is another place. Yeah, and people aren't driving with aloha. And I personally testify to what Dylan was saying is true, but not from even the perspective of a car, but from a pedestrian. You have two lanes that are turning right sometimes while the, the walk signal is on. And they may make eye contact to you, but that doesn't mean they're going to slow down or stop for a pedestrian in that crosswalk. So let's look at this together and have DTS come in and, and help us with solutions. And I'm sorry, but if you're a pedestrian, you're facing a car, it's not a fair match. So if we need some stoplights, like Rafia's saying, in front of the Thai restaurant, also a very dangerous place. It's a stretch of Wiley that people feel they can speed on and try and make up some, some time. So thank you for all your comments. I think we're still on Mr. Cruckey. So are there other, other questions for Mr. Cruckey right now? Sorry, Mr. Cruckey, you got a lot of traffic concerns, but they're real concerns.
Would, would you like me to see if someone from DTS could, could come into your Traffic and Safety Committee meeting?
Absolutely.
You could have a robust discussion.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Let me try to do that. Let me, you know, let me know when it is and then I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you very much. And are there any other questions for Mr. Cruckey? Okay, sir, this, we're like unusually quiet this month and last month. So whatever that is, we'll, we'll take it as everything is going well. So thank you for the good work you do for our city and community.
Having me, aloha.
And just as, I, I won't say this is a community concern, but I do want to point out that we have three, at least three candidates, it looks like to me, for our next upcoming election here. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves again or you're okay to just chillax? Or do you want to tell us when the two forum are at PBS Insights and? Civil Beat, yes, okay. And we have, go ahead and introduce yourself, hi.
Hello, my name is Tina Nakata Grandinetti. I'm one of the five candidates in the Democratic primary for District Twenty. I will just, I know I've introduced myself here already. I'm born and raised here on Oahu. I currently work as a postdoctoral fellow at a national policy institute focusing on housing policy that prevents displacement of our local communities. Before that, I was working at the state legislature for Representative Amy Prusso. And I have a background in community organizing around issues like the struggle to shut down Red Hill and advocating for tenants at Kapilani Village Apartments who are getting evicted to make room for Kui Lake Place. But I will just share, there's five of us and everyone's kind of spoiled for choice in this race. Civil Beat is hosting a meet and greet on June twenty-sixth with all of us. And then PBS Insights is having an hour-long candidate forum the following day on June twenty-seventh. So it'll be a good chance to hear all of us kind of speak to the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And would either of our other two candidates here want to come up and introduce yourselves or? Okay.
Meeting board members, hi again. I'm Kevin Wong, one of the many candidates. I guess, again, a little background for me. I started at the Capitol working for Scott Nishimoto. I was there for seven years. Now I'm in the mayor's office. I've been there for about five. And I focus on all the state legislation that affects the city departments and how they operate. But I'm hoping to take that experience and do some good. This is the area I grew up in. And basically, aside from college, I've been here forever and I plan to stay here forever. So I want it to be as best as it can be. But enough about me.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, and?
Hi, John Choi. There's a lady reading the Bible on an airplane. And this guy sat next to her and said, you believe that stuff? And she goes, sure I do. He says, what about that guy who got swallowed by the whale? She said, yeah, I believe him. She goes, well, how do you know it's true? And she says, well, I have to, when I see him up in heaven, I'll have to ask him. And then the guy said, well, what if he's not in heaven? And she turned to him and said, I guess you'll have to ask him. John Choi, I'm fifty-five years old and I'm not going to quit my day job to tell jokes. I've been a trial lawyer for twenty-five years. And I fought incredible odds on behalf of the people. And I continue, I want to continue that fight in the legislature. I'm the only candidate that's been in District Twenty for twenty-two years. My daughter went to Waikiki Elementary. My other daughter went to Kahala Elementary. Couple of years ago, we're involved, I was involved in a team of lawyers that were able to bring back seventy-eight million dollars back to the taxpayer during the opioid litigation. Every time someone OD'd, our, we had to pay for that. The Narcan, the ambulance, the hospital, the police fire. And we brought back seventy-eight million dollars from Purdue Pharmaceutical, the Sacklers. I've been fighting my entire career. And this is a battle that's going on. And the most important thing is the two bills that didn't get passed last year. The one for clean elections. And the second one is to stop the pay-to-play. Once we get those bills passed, things should fall in line. I'll give you a quick example of New Jersey was run by the mob. They were the dirtiest politics in our country. And they passed very similar, similar laws. And now they have the top five cleanest electorate. It can be done. We must do it. And I'm fighting for my children because I want them to come back from college and have a future in Hawaii where the economy is vibrant, when there there'll be reasonable rents and houses for sale. But we need to first stop the pay-to-play. Thank you.
Thank you to our candidates. And if there are any of that are online that were not here, if you can raise your hand. But there's, I believe there's six total, aren't there? Six candidates total. And you can see everybody go out by going to State Board of Elections or Hawaii State Board of Elections and then go to House District Twenty. And just for the three of you here, would you be interested in just coming here half an hour early before our next board meeting at five-thirty if people wanted to come and chat with you? Yes, yes, okay. And, and I'll, I'll let your colleagues know as well who are running. And we do have, thank you for stepping up for, for this to represent our district. It's the foundation of our democracy. And thank you for coming here tonight as well. I did just want to give them a shout out because they, one of these good people will be representing us and the rest of them are community advocates. Okay, with that, we will move on to, on our, our agenda. We got presentations, we have some bus route changes. I think Mr. Yang from the Department of Transportation Services is here. And I think we have, we've uploaded the bus route changes. I'm not sure that any of them affect our specific area, but he will no doubt tell us right now. You there, Mr.?
Hi, can, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, Kent is actually on vacation. So I'm Jay Guza. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. Hold on, I'm just going to share my screen real quick. All right, can you see my screen okay?
Yep.
Great. Okay, so yeah, like I said, my name is Jay Guza. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. And I'm here to share upcoming bus service changes that will be effective on Sunday, August eighteenth. So this initial stuff I'm going to share, it is happening in August. Doesn't affect your neighborhood board too much. This is routes nine and seven. Route, Route nine does come through this area over here kind of by TCC. So So you might have some residents that might use Route nine. But I'm just going to go through this really quickly and get to the areas that does cover and affect your district more. Okay, so this is Route nine Pro Harbor, Kamaki to Pro Harbor. It will be discontinued. There's not going to be any service on Buckingham and Center Drive. And that's kind of by the Moana shopping center. Here are the alternate routes. I'm just going to go through and call out Routes two and two L. That's the routes that go to KCC as well as Route three, which goes to KCC. And yeah, you guys can read through all of these routes. I don't want to kind of waste too much time going through these here. Route seven, this is the route that serves Kalihii Valley. It's going to be split into two new routes. So Route seven Kalihii, and it's going to go to Kahala. And Route 307, it's going to service Kamakia for Road and go to Kalihii Transit Center. So this new Route seven, like I said, it's going to start in Kalihii Valley, going to serve Kalihii Valley, Kalihii Palama. Got the list here, you guys can see. And it's going to end at Kahala Mall. So it's going to go through Kamaki and then end at Kahala Mall. Span of service on weekdays, it's going to operate from 4:30 a.m. till 11:15 p.m. Weekends, from 5:45 a.m. to 11:15 p.m. Here's the frequencies during the a.m. and p.m. peaks. It's going to be every 15 minutes, and that includes the shuttle. And then during base periods, it's going to operate every 30 minutes. And during nights, it will be every 40 minutes. And this is Route 307. I'm just going to skip through this if that's okay, because this is way out of your district. And this is a map here showing the new routes. So again, Route seven, starting from Kalihii Valley, going through town, Iwale, Hakako, through Kamaki, ending at Kahala Mall. Okay, now it's the area that is closer to home. So the current Route nine S, which operates within Palolo Valley, and Route 20, which operates from Waikiki Airport and Aloha Stadium. So the Route nine S will be restructured and renumbered to Route 200. Route 20, the Kapilani Park Loop segment will be discontinued. The new terminus will be located on Monsor Avenue, kind of by the Kapilani Bandstand. So this new Route 200, which originates in Palolo Valley, is going to be the route that absorbs the Kapilani Loop segment from Route 20. So the service areas for this new Route 200 will be Palolo Valley, going to hit Shaminad School, St. Louis, Market City Shopping Center, Kamaki High School. It's going to go by Kapilani Community College, past the Honodelu Zoo and around Kapilani Park. Span of service for this route, it will be 5:30 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. every day, and it will operate every 30 minutes. And so these are the map, this is the map for the two routes. So again, this is Route 200 here, from Palolo, down by Kamaki High School, Kamaki Avenue, Sixth Avenue, down Aloha Street, Monsorot, and then looping around Kapilani Park. And the reverse routing, it's just going to travel the same way it came. Okay, and then this is Route 20. Instead of going around Kapilani Park, it's just going to terminate here on Monsorot. Other service changes, Route 18, University and Alamoana, and Route 24, Kapo Hulu, Inahaina. These routes are going to be discontinued. So Route 18, some of the alternate routes here. Route A, which travels from Pro Ridge, goes to downtown to UH Manoa. Route four travels from the Uwano through downtown Makiki, UH Manoa, and Waikiki. Route five goes from Manoa Valley to Alamoana. Route six, starting in Pohor, goes through downtown Alamoana, UH Manoa, and they get Manoa Valley. Route eight, from Makiki to Alamoana, ending at Waikiki. Route 13, the Uwano through downtown Alamoana, Waikiki, Kapo Hulu, ending at UH Manoa. And Route 102, that travels from Makiki to Alamoana. And for Route 24, since this is going to be discontinued as well, I just wanted to call out that there will be no bus service on 22nd Avenue, Uanui Street, Upanini Avenue, and Pokole Street. So alternate routes for Route 24 is Route one, which travels from Kalihii through downtown, ending at Kahala. Route 1L starts in Halava, and then it goes through Kalihii, downtown Kahala, into Inahaina, ending in Hawaii Kai. Routes two and two L starts in Kalihii downtown, through Waikiki, hits Kapilani Community College and ends at Kahala. Route three, which starts in Salt Lake, goes through downtown Alamoana, Kamaki, ending at Kapilani Community College. The new Route seven, again, from Kalihii downtown to Alamoana, Kamaki, and ending at Kahala. Route 13 starts in the Uwano, goes through downtown Alamoana, Waikiki, Kapo Hulu, and ends at UH Manoa. And Route 14, for select trips, goes from St. Louis Heights to Kapo Hulu, Kahala, and goes to Mauna Lani.
A little bump over.
No, he wants to put it so you can't go right. Like if you're going on a date to come.
And lastly, Route, new Route 23, which I will cover in a bit, that is starting in Kahala, goes through Inahaina, hits Hawaii Kai and ends at Sea Life Park. Okay, so this is the Route 23 currently. It travels from Alamoana and goes to Sea Life Park. And this is going to be restructured. So the changes for this Route 23, the segment from Alamoana to Kahala Mall will be discontinued to some of these alternate, this alternate routes. It's going to be Routes two and two L for select trips. That's going to travel, but the bold area is the areas that Route 23 covers. So from Waikiki to KCC and then Kahala, that's where the Route two and two L will cover. The new Route seven, it's covering the Alamoana and Kahala portions of the current Route 23. And then select trips for the Route 14 that will cover Kapo Hulu and Kahala segments. A little bit more changes for the new Route 23. The route will be extended into Inahaina to serve as a replacement for the discontinued Route 24. The route will stay the same between Inahaina and Sea Life Park as well as the span of service and the frequency that will stay the same. Okay, and here is the map showing the new Route 23 serving within Inahaina, ending at Kahala Mall. And this is the Route two. So anybody who currently use the Route 24, going to Kapo Hulu or wherever along the way, they can use the Route two to get through Waikiki or KCC, whatnot. Okay, and this map shows all of the new routes that will be starting on August 18th. Also, again, Route, well, the Route two kind of already does this already. So that's not really changing. But again, Route seven, the Route 20 ending on Monsorot, the Route 23 serving Inahaina and Kahala Mall, ending at Kahala Mall. And the new Route 200, serving Palolo Valley and ending at Kapilani Park. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a lot of information. And I mistaken a lot of changes for our neighborhood, actually. How are you going to be putting this in the newspapers and getting this word out? Or is the bus going to be free for a week or two to get people encouraged to use it more on these new routes? Or what's the plan for rolling out the information in addition to coming to our board?
Yeah, so we are going to be posting rider alerts at all the affected bus stops. The, these changes will be available on the Waho Transit Services website. There will be a press release as well that will cover all of these changes. And yeah, the rider alerts too, they're going to be emailed to council members and all affected neighborhood boards as well. So you'll get hard copies in your email when those are finalized. Well, to answer your question about the free, like free bus rides, that is not in the plans.
Okay, send that recommendation along. And Angie, you got a question?
I do. Thank you so much for this and for the pictures. I did have a few questions. I just wanted to confirm that Route one and one L are not being changed. Is that correct?
Those are not being changed. Those will stay the same.
Okay, sweet. And then I did have a question, and I don't know if you said this. For the parts of Route seven that are taking over Route nine on the while I side, do you know offhand if their frequency is going to be similar to what was there before or?
It's similar, yes. It's not getting any worse.
Okay, slightly comforting. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Are there other questions from folks in the audience?
I just have a quick question. This is Arlene. Thank you for the presentation. Is any of this going to be offered in alternative languages?
I know we are translating the Route seven rider notice. Do you, do you have a specific language that?
No, but yeah, I mean, I know that our community has very many different languages. And a lot of the people that use the bus are, English is typically not their second, their first language, it's their second. So I've run across this in other situations. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Yes, we will look into that.
Are there other questions from folks online? I do see, there's a hand of Margaret.
Hi, Route 14, St. Louis. You said selected. What does that mean? St. Louis Heights.
Select trips basically means at its current service. It doesn't go down to like past Diamond Head every single trip. It doesn't do that all day. So I believe it only does that during either the peaks or the base period. I'm sorry, I have to go and double check. But it's one or the other. It's not both.
Okay, because right now it's, it's pretty, it's great. But yeah, I just, if you could elaborate on that, I just, I just feel like, I think there are quite a few people that ride the bus from St. Louis.
Yeah, so the Route 14 is not changing. So the existing service will remain the same.
But what was the selected? It says selected.
Oh, that was just saying that if, if anybody does use, what was it, Route 24 around, I guess, its current route? There are certain routes that they could, or certain trips that they could use the Route 14. Yeah, it's not, it wasn't saying that the Route 14 was changing at all.
Okay, okay, good. Confusing.
Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. And Daisy, you got a question?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Actually, I have several questions. Good presentation. Major, major changes going to confuse a lot of bus drive riders, including the tourists, because have you ever gone to Kahala Mall? They use the number 23 to get to Waikiki by the Hilton. Then they go to Alamoana Center. Now, how are they going to get from there? We're using the number two, which goes nowhere near Alamoana Center. Tourists are also a big factor in this. You are making a lot of changes without consulting a lot of people. Only that means that no buses, except number 14, will go around Kapilani Park. That's going to be difficult for people that are so used to going down by the Elks, by the carriageway. That's going to be once every hour. And I'm glad the number seven is going to change. Would it go on Kapilani or would it go on South King Street to get to Kahala Mall? Those are some questions. And these are too much things done at the same time. And you're getting rid of some routes that are very effective. The 24, the 23, a lot of tourists use that. Once they go to Kapilani, by, get off by Diamond Head, Lookout, and et cetera, they're going to be confused. It's like, how come I can't go to Alamoana anymore? The bus drivers are going to be very difficult to try to get them into Waikiki to transfer to another route that would take them into Alamoana Center. A lot of this needs to really be refined because apparently it seems to be done by people that don't ride the bus or people that don't really use this system. Because if you look at it, number 13, there's a lot of people using it for different reasons. Tourists go and use it to go to Leonard's or Safeway. And some people use it to go to the UH. But there are so many changes that this cannot be just say, okay, let's have a press release. And guess what? This is what you're going to end up with. This is going to confuse a lot of riders. I'm sorry, but you really need to go back and really reevaluate because this doesn't seem to make much sense to people that actually ride the bus because a lot of them depend on the bus numbers, especially the kapunas. They don't know the routes. This is to say, oh, number two, they know where they're going. Number one, they know where they're going. 13, they know where they're going. Now they don't have any idea, no clue. They're going to be really confused. So it's not like just putting a notice on the, on the bus stops. It takes a lot more education. This should have been done in phases, not done all one time. So I appreciate if you go back in and tell DTS to really, really look at it because it doesn't seem to be people that ride the bus that made this route changes. It might be convenient for some, but no, please go back. And really, we just talk to the people that ride the bus because I don't think a survey was ever done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, we will take it back.
Yeah, and is the bus still going to be going along Campbell Avenue then? I think it was 13, wasn't it?
Oh, that's the Route two.
Will that still be going along Campbell?
Yes, that will not change.
Yeah, and that route, you know, it's a, the route that goes along Alohea, it looks like it swings along, it's the sixth or seventh, that Moheia towards the freeway. And then it looks like it's going to turn left on Kamaki Street. There's a traffic circulo on that route that's hard to navigate with a regular sized vehicle. I cannot imagine a bus doing that. But beyond that, Alohea has a tremendous amount of traffic right now that's quite dangerous. And now having a bus line go along there seems like, you know, it's, I don't know. I remember when KCC was going to build their project, they were very cognizant of these large vehicles going through the neighborhoods that were noisy and potentially, you know, just large disruptions. Does that factor into how this goes about? And why was that route chosen specifically rather than, you know, I just don't see why that's suddenly cutting through that neighborhood. And I don't even see how it's going to navigate the, it's not a circulo. What do we call it? A roundabout, yeah. Anyway, just a comment that it seems like a strange routing for that, given the, and even the very tight turn as it goes after Mo'ohao and turns towards, you know, the freeway there. You're gonna have to get rid of some parking on the street or something because a regular car can't navigate that turn toward the mountain after Mo'ohao. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and we may want to invite you back next month as well if we've got some more questions or even just to reiterate, you know, what we've gone over, or you might have some other updates. But we know it's a hard job and try and figure out what the routing should be and what goes where. I know there's a lot of research in it, but it is a lot of changes coming up. And I suppose people will just have to get used to it, but some may work out better than others, as you'll find. With that, if there's no more questions, then thank you very much for coming today. And again, that, that report is on our Google website, so you can see a listing to the new bus route changes there. And I'm sure it's also at DTS's website as well. And maybe Amanda will put that in there for us too. Thank you, Amanda, in advance if you do. Okay, and with that, then let's move on to.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, hang on one second. Is that Daisy? Is that you? Am I hearing you?
No.
Oh, Mr. Secretary Boyd, got a question? Go ahead, Secretary Boyd.
It's Linda Wong. I have my hand up.
We can't, yeah, I know. I'll call on you next, Linda. And Mr. Boyd, Secretary Boyd, we can't hear you if you're talking. Maybe hold your spacebar. Hey, David, you're not muted. I know that, but we cannot hear you. Sorry about that. You okay? Okay. If you figure it out, then, or you want to put it in the chat. And Linda, go ahead.
It's parked at Theater in the afternoon, two hours, in the whole right-hand lane. And it's very difficult to get around. And when you make turns from other streets coming up to go to Diamond Head Theater, that bus is always in the way. And if you see, it's one by vision, you can't turn onto that street because the bus is there and you can't see around it. The streets are very narrow. So why would a bus be there for a couple of hours every afternoon?
I'm sorry, I missed a huge chunk of your question.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me? I'm not loud enough?
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
Just repeat it, Linda.
Okay, thank you. There's a bus parked outside of Diamond Head Theater every afternoon for a couple of hours. This has been going on for years. And I don't understand why there's a bus parked out in front, on the side of Diamond Head Theater where the parking is for a couple of hours every day. Because some of those streets are blind turns and you can't see around the bus. It makes it very dangerous.
Okay, so that is our Route 9. That is the route that will be discontinued. So that bus will no longer be laying over at that location. Yeah, it won't be there anymore.
Thank you very much, Mahalo.
Thank you for your question.
Okay, and Secretary Boyd, maybe you're back? We still can't hear you. Okay, okay. Maybe your volume might be turned all the way down. And I know there's a power outage still downtown with the servers because we lost a couple of people and they came back on. And the correct name for that study is Vision Zero, right? Okay. For the traffic safety studies. We have a presentation by the Verizon Small Cells Telecommunication Installation with Erica Reyes and Barry Weatherspoon, and we got that called up. So take it away, folks.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for, okay, thank you for confirming. Thank you for having me. My name is Erica Reyes and I'm with Centerline Communications. We handle Verizon's leasing permitting and designs in the Hawaiian Islands. The reason for tonight's presentation is Verizon's five small, small cell projects in the Diamond Head area. And I have just about a few slides to share with you this evening. The first slide covers the myths from the facts, as some of you may be concerned about 5G. The first myth is that 5G is new and has not been researched. Fact is that scientists in the US and around the world have conducted research on RF energy for decades. And in December of 2019, in a unanimous and bipartisan decision, the FCC affirmed that the safe, that the same RF safety standards that apply to earliest wireless technologies such as 3G and 4G apply to 5G. The FCC took action after a lengthy proceeding and consultation with multiple federal agencies and close examination of the RF research. And in 2020, FDA released a report reviewing studies on RF health and safety from the last 10 years and found that there's actually no quantifiable adverse health effects in humans caused by exposures at or under the current cellphone exposure limits. And this research, of course, continues to sustain. Agencies continue to monitor it. Another myth is that 5G use of millimeter wave spectrum is harmful. RF, fact is that RF energy exists all around us and has many helpful uses. For example, baby monitors use RF energy to convey information and light bulbs use it to provide light. For 5G technology, it uses RF energy to enable very fast wireless internet access service that we all use. And 5G technology that uses millimeter wave spectrum is subject to the same FCC safety standards that apply to all frequencies of spectrum used for wireless communications. So therefore, 5G network using millimeter wave spectrum are not only helpful, but also must meet FCC safety standards. Another myth is that wireless carriers clustering in an area will cause cumulative RF energy to exceed FCC limits. The fact is, though, cumulative RF energy generated by the aggregate antennas must fall within FCC limits. Another myth is that 5G network puts our children at risk. Fact, no matter which generation of technology we use, all Verizon networks and equipment must comply with federal government safety standards. And those standards have wide safety margins and are designed to protect everyone, including our children. And last myth on this slide is that 5G will harm the environment and wildlife, disrupting migratory patterns and killing off birds. Fact is that reports suggesting harmful effects of RF to non-humans, including birds, honeybees, and other insects, have been largely discredited. The Autobahn Magazine actually published a piece observing that there is no evidence that 5G radio wave kill or otherwise harm birds. And the American Bee Journal also published a piece addressing why there is no good reason to expect 5G to harm honeybees. So the bottom line is that telecommunications networks and equipment that comply with FCC standards are safe for communities and for consumers. I hope this bit of information puts some of your concerns to rest about 5G. As for the next slide, it covers energy emissions of household items and basically shows non-ionizing and ionizing spectrum. As you can see on the ionizing side, you'll see there's the x-ray machine, tanning bed, and we have the light bulb right in the middle. The small cell actually falls under non-ionizing spectrum, which is the least intrusive. If you can see my cursor right here. And on this slide, we also provide additional resources if there are any of you that are interested in going through these links for a more in-depth RF safety information, wireless health facts. And on the bottom right corner, we've also provided resources for facts about energy or facts about RF energy. The next five slide will be the five projects that Verizon has in the Diamond Head area. The first one is Diamond Head SEO2, which is located at 3223 Monserrat Avenue. It just kind of shows a bird's eye view of the location on the left-hand side of the slide. This right here is the existing streetlight. And this is how it's gonna look like with the proposed small cell project. The next one will be the Diamond Head SEO3 located at 3045, 3054 McKinney Street. And again, it shows the existing streetlight right here and how it will look like after de-fact. The next one is Diamond Head SEO4, which is located at 3154 George Street. This is the existing and this is the proposed. Next one is Diamond Head SEO5, located at 3018 McCorriston Street. Again, this is the existing streetlight and the proposed. The last project is Diamond Head SEO6, located at 3467 Upper Street. Again, bird's eye view of the location, existing streetlight and the proposed. That basically concludes our presentation for this evening. So if anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Presenters from Verizon, what, in person? Angie?
Hi, thank you so much for coming and presenting this. I had two quick questions and I apologize if you said this and I just missed it. Is there a schedule or timeline for when these are gonna be put on to, or, I don't know, constructed?
Like a construction timeline. We're looking, we're looking at Q1 of next year. The construction will probably take approximately about two weeks, two weeks to a month, but it's projected to be for Q1 of next year.
Is that Q1 physical or Q1 calendar?
I believe Q1 fiscal.
Okay, so well, okay, sorry. So do you think it's in January or do you think it's in August?
Um, you know what, I wanna actually get you the correct information and I can always email Winston for that, just to be sure. I don't wanna give you January and it's not in January. But typically, our Q1 is between January to March, so.
Okay, okay, sweet. And then with that, I was just curious if the kind of, when you work on each of the streets, is that like each one takes two weeks? Or is it in two weeks, all of them will be completed?
Oh, each one takes between two weeks to three weeks, depending on the situation. But it's not cumulative of all of the five projects. It's per project for Verizon.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. You're welcome.
And other questions? We have a couple online. Linda? Maybe not. Daisy?
Thank you for the presentation. Is this the same project that was canceled on Leahi Avenue? I understand it was canceled last year. I'm not sure it was the same 5G cell service that for some reason the project was canceled. I could be wrong.
I'm not quite sure, but I could check on that. It's, I'm not aware of, of that. But I can definitely look into it for you, Daisy. Thank you.
Thank you, because there was a 5G network that they were gonna work on Leahi, but for some reason it got canceled at the last minute. Thank you.
Got it. It could have been a different carrier as well, so.
And Linda, do you have a comment? Is your hand just up?
Make it go down. So I don't have a comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and Daisy, you know, we did have this come up. It was maybe a year or two ago. And it was around Leahi where these cellphone towers were proposed to be basically hanging outside of people's bedrooms, you know, 10 feet away. And, you know, I appreciate the science lesson we got earlier. But I think, you know, as we learn more about everything from, you know, statins of 50 years down the road, now they're saying only half of us need to take them. You know, it seems to be a reasonable concern of people being close to these things. Did you have, are there any statutory requirements for you to notify the people who live around these things? Or, you know, how far away are they placed from people's homes as far as these specific locations? That, if you have any information about that, and have they been notified?
Well, the noticing is actually only for if we're co-locating on HECO poles. But attaching on the streetlight poles, the only requirement from the city is actually this presentation. As far as for measurements from the home, as you can see here, the first project, I can get you a more approximate distance from the home. For example, here at Monserrat Avenue, if you can see the pole, there is a home right here. But as far as for noticing, the noticing is actually the presentation this evening. And again, if it's on HECO poles, then letters go out.
So if it's on a light pole, it doesn't, but if it's on a HECO pole, it does?
It does require noticing letters to go out to residents. I wanna say about 100 feet radius. But on the streetlights, the requirement is, of course, this presentation this evening from the city.
And sorry, what did you say about on a HECO, on a HECO pole, it would be 100, did you say?
I believe, I believe 100 feet radius from where the installation is going to happen for HECO poles.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I wonder why there's any discrepancy at all. Is the radiation different coming from being on top of a HECO pole versus a light pole? It just seems like the weight. Well, yeah, if you can let us know, why, why is that? Why is there a discrepancy? And, and will you notify the people around that anyway? Would be, you know, follow-up question.
I see. Let me get, let me get back to you on that one, just to solidify my answer. You know, there is no difference. The only difference is the pole. This one is on streetlights. The other one is on a HECO pole. But I'll check with the jurisdiction on why that is.
Okay, and are you anticipating putting more of these in the future around the neighborhood as well? And if so, what do you know about that?
That actually depends on the RF for Verizon and depending on the research, depending on the need and depending really on the bandwidth and the population of the community, right? So I can check, but it would have to come from Verizon statistics as far as to what research they've done thus far for the Hawaiian Islands and where any more of these small cells are going up.
Yeah, if you could get that to us and just, and there's probably some sort of coverage maps that these particular towers are meant to cover. And they may, they may be in a, you know, spot that's weak right now. There's, there's obviously a reason for it. Do they expect this in other areas? Do they know of other areas right now? Why is it just these? And, you know, can we anticipate more? And if so, what would those be? And those would just be some follow-up questions.
Hi, this is Tan. I'm with Erica's team. So we do also have HECO wood poles in the Diamond Head area, about like 15 of them on the Verizon side. So what's on the screen now is just these streetlight poles.
Right, we understand, but it's just the notification that.
Yeah, just different pole owners have different requirements on. Yeah, just different pole owners have different requirements on their, on the way they would notify residents nearby. So it's just, just a matter of preference on what HECO prefers and what the city and county prefers.
Okay, well, and those are the questions still, you know, if you can get back to us on those um as well. Uh, and, and, and these are of course separate from AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or other small cell providers as well. Is that correct? Or will they also be able to use your signals?
Oh, well, that is correct. So Verizon, AT&amp;T have their own projects, all separate entities, separate carriers, so.
Okay, wait, well, if there's no more questions, Daisy, you've got a question maybe?
Thank you. Um, there was one place on Hinano Street that the residents had no idea. I'm not sure if it was Verizon or another carrier, but I think they had problems with it. So I don't know if it's a by Verizon. Um, that there's, the residents on Hinano Street had problems as far as not being notified. So it would be nice for people around the area to be notified. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Daisy. Okay, and thank you for coming tonight for your presentation and uh I believe we got that uploaded into the drive as well, so people can refer to that and the specific locations and let their um neighbors know uh if that, that's a concern.
Right. Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. And uh, I think maybe there's one more question here for you. Noella, am I right?
Oh, yeah. Hi, uh, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Reyes. I do recall Ms. Daisy's comment a moment ago about the residents of Hinano Street, whether or not it was Verizon is not the, you know, but there wasn't an issue and uh many people, and I know you know this, uh, are, are a little nervous about that very powerful technology. And in the case, you know, as people, let's say with a hearing aid um or people with pacemakers, um, there are health issues involved with individuals all over the place worldwide. But to me, I, I, I see where you're placing these things and it's a very concentrated area. So with that said, respectfully, the, the concerns of the people's health is at risk because it's been brought up before. People are nervous about this powerful technology. And I think, you know, I didn't get a chance to look at your links, but I will. Has any sort of waiver or really, you know, solid evidence to the people on those streets that are gonna have this, it's on a lamppost light, but that's very strong energy inside those little teensy boxes. So, you know, um, I, I say this, you know, you guys, people are a little nervous about 5G. They just are, you know? Uh, and, and for all intents and purposes, we hope it's safe, but it is extremely powerful technology. And people's health has been affected by these sort of energy rays coming at people all around them. And that's what I'd like to just, you know, ask, please look into that. Um, are the people of the streets that you intend to place these devices, are they being given, you know, solid information? Because if it, it, it's sort of like a little, you know, nerve-wracking, you know, about going on those streets. It's a concentrated area. And so anyway, uh, thank you for taking my question and, you know, my statement on this one. I super appreciate it. Thank you very, very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Noella. I think your, your concerns are shared by many, which is, I think, why we got the mini-science selection lecture at the beginning, so um, you know, and we'll, you know, we'll, we're all in a giant science experiment, aren't we, with, with all the new technologies? But okay, we will look forward to some follow-up answers on that one as time goes by. And thank you both for uh coming today. Uh, I'm not sure that we, do we still have a quorum here? Do you say, Camelia? Um, because we have a resolution for board action, which was placed in the um uh, the board drive and let's see, I don't know. Michelle is still here. Michelle, are you still here? Because if you are, this is a resolution regarding Senate. We do, okay, we do have a form, a resolution on a Senate Bill thirty-two oh two, which we have passed already about this urban development and community opposition for its negative impacts. So the governor did sign this even though it was opposed. Um, I don't know if it was unanimous by the city council, maybe Amanda knows that, but uh, and many communities have uh concerns about this. So this resolution uh simply um sends a message to the governor about this and I'm certain that there will be follow-up uh legislation in this next session as well as uh in the city council. But Michelle, are you here to explain this a little better?
Yes, I am.
You want to do that for us, what this uh, what this resolution uh is about, if there's anything else?
Oh, something's wrong with the camera. It's going in the wrong direction. Anyway, um, I'll just stop the video. Uh, it's very interesting because uh Pearl City Neighborhood Board twenty-one adopted a resolution that is highly comprehensive. It is a culmination of other boards' resolutions as well as their own position. And this was posted uh with uh two other documents on our materials drive to show these, the origins of all of this and the reason to support the Pearl City uh Neighborhood Board number twenty-one resolution. Um, which stems from the Kailua Neighborhood Board uh action, our own resolution for our board. And Manoa, Kai Makki and Hawaii Kai have also weighed in on this issue equally as uh concerned and opposing entities to this. We'll call it a concept because it's a reaction. It is not a solution. Uh, this Senate Bill uh thirty-two oh two. Um, calling for urban development in all of our neighborhoods, whether they're established, historic, stable or uh otherwise without considering the true development areas around TOD. Um, this resolution relates, uh, with the draft resolution uh relates to community district concerns and opposition to Senate Bill thirty-two oh two as it was enacted and its potential significant impacts to established communities and neighborhoods. And through the background information from the other neighborhood boards who have taken these positions, the uh Manoa, Hawaii Kai, uh, Kamaki, our board, Kailua, Pearl City has developed this re, uh, this resolution following the uh token action by the governor to sign this into law that avoids any public hearings at the Planning Commission level. And it also avoids any public hearings at the city council level. It does allow one person to make decisions and that is the DPP Director, Department of Planning and Permitting Director, under certain conditions, restrictive conditions. Um, this avoids home rule uh by our city, by our city council. And uh basically uh converts our neighborhoods into much higher density neighborhoods we have invested in because of their historic value, there's, and they're uh stable um community uh environment. These are older neighborhoods in our community district, Diamond Head, Kapole, St. Lloyd's Heights. These are not the new neighborhoods in Kapole or Eva or um elsewhere around the rail line. It is now coming in just as Pool A. The, the four-hundred-foot tower is being built along Kapilani. So without going into uh further dialogue on this, um, the recommendation is to support the Pearl Cities, uh, it's Pearl City Neighborhood Board's resolution. Pearl City Neighborhood Board number twenty-one adopted unanimously on May twenty-eighth. Uh, to support that resolution and um embrace it as our own, uh, mentioning all the neighborhood boards and community districts that also have presented these concerns. And I think the draft that was posted, I'm not quite sure who finalized it because I was away for three weeks, but it's an excellent draft. And it has um everything that needs to be expressed. So my recommendation and my motion is to uh support the Pearl City Resolution with modifications as our own board's resolution. And um and with that, I'll uh, I'll ask for a second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a, I will take that as a motion to um accept this resolution or to pass this resolution. Do I have a second? Julia, okay, any discussion on this?
I have discussion. If you can hear me?
Yes, madam, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I support this resolution as there have been um several uh different neighborhood boards from different areas. And what's happened is the governor um
You're kind of cutting in and out, Linda. I think we kind of lost you, Linda.
Linda, can you try turning off your video and just focus on the audio? Linda, if you can hear me, can you turn off your video?
I also have a question as to why our uh our um our spots are called unveiled or unverified. This is ridiculous. I don't know what kind of system this is, but uh, it's gotta be fixed.
Okay, uh, Linda. Okay, Linda, go ahead now.
That's a different issue. Um, so I support this resolution as with other neighborhood boards and other movements where the neighborhood boards have, get together and concentrate on one issue because we hold weight that way and we get the uh community's attention and they know that we're out to protect them. Waiting all height limit, all rules, any kind of um historic, any kind of, any kind of rules in building is crazy because we don't have uh, no matter what kind of housing we lack, we still are all pushed together here in um the urban core and the traffic just runs rampant because of this. So we have a bill like this one that says we can quarter or half anybody's acreage in a uh, a lot. Then we're multiplying everybody by two or four. So I think that's uh crazy. We, it's not uh, it's not equal with what we need. So I would uh like it if everybody would vote for this. Thank you.
Uh, Linda, this is Noella, and I just wanted to say that at the very beginning of your um statement, we could not hear you. You were cutting in and out.
The chair already told me that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
I think we understood Linda's wholeheartedly for this resolution. Margaret?
Sorry, sorry, hi. I agree. Uh, one of the things that um was confusing is other newer neighborhoods like Melalani, they're exempt from this thirty-two oh two. You know, from the putting multiple dwelling units on lots as small as twelve-hundred square feet. Why are we subject to it? But I wholeheartedly support the bill.
Thank you, Margaret.
Uh, a point, a point of order, uh, Margaret, you support the bill or the resolution?
The resolution.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you for the clarification on that. There's no, and Secretary Boito?
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good. All right, I oppose this resolution because we need to allow the owners of the residential properties to build uh additional accessory dwelling units, um, because they can't afford to buy more land. If they need more housing for their family, for their children, um, I'd say we should, you know, this bill allows them to build that on their residential lot. And I think it's come to that we need to do this because um, you know, the people just can't afford to buy more residential land to build on. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boito. And Rafia?
Uh, I support the resolution. That's all. Yeah.
Thank you. Succinct and right on. Okay, and Angie?
Hi, I again oppose this resolution just on the, it's not mandating anything. Um, and I understand the concerns and I support the concerns and I also share concerns. Uh, but it's up to the discretion of DTP, uh, DPP. And that also is noted in this resolution, which I support, but the bill itself, that's now an act signed by the governor, doesn't mandate anything. And that's how I interpret it, um, because I know that often we go back and forth on this a lot, but that's how I interpret it. So that's my stance on this.
Thank you, Angie. Um, if there's no other comments, I'll let Michelle have the last word.
Oh, well, it's interesting um that one would think that the bill doesn't mandate anything because it takes away the planning commission's rights and the public hearings at the planning commission. It takes away the public hearings at the city council. It allows the Kit City Council by a deadline to create certain structures which would have to conform with the bill that requires subdividing single-family residential lots. And to the previous speaker, uh, the subdivision isn't just families trying to get all of their families on one residential lot. So families can, whole families can afford homes. This is an entree for developers to come in because families can't pay their property taxes. They are escalating more and more every year. And that is because of all the market housing that's being built in the high-rises all around us now. And then this comes in and provides an opening for developers to purchase properties from families who can no longer afford their taxes and build multiple units on these residential properties in established neighborhoods and historic neighborhoods and build uh impervious surfaces, taking away the green space, taking away the tree canopies in the face of climate change. This is a resolution that calls to question the rationale of a bill that is trying to usurp our traditional planning practices.
Thank you, Michelle. And uh, I, I will agree with um with what Michelle just said. I think it was a one-size-fits-all bill. When the city council had a special hearing about this and brought up all of the concerns that it had alone. And we face a number of other development concerns from uh the two oh one HIs, both city and state, um, as well as the PUCDP. It's a sort of a, a never-ending assault on our communities and how they will look and feel. And as, as Angie said, we've talked about this a lot. I don't think there's a new new information here, but uh, and Bruce isn't here tonight, but you know, he would go on about taxes and property taxes like Michelle just said, but also the feeling is, okay. the feeling is, okay, you can already feel what it's like over in Moa Iliili or Kakaako or Alawana area and how that has changed, or Makiki. And it's, this is just simply, and this does nothing in the current law prevented people from wanting to have an Ohana unit put on in our neighborhood or requesting that. And that doesn't deny any of this of having a mother-in-laws or something like that. So with that, I will be supporting this resolution. And with that, Camilla, I would like to call for a vote on this, if you could do a roll call.
Okay, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution as written. Okay. Allen?
Aye.
Boito?
Nay.
Decker? David? Michelle, David? Hasina?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Knight?
Nay.
Mattson?
Aye.
Merchi?
Aye.
Velasco?
Aye.
Whitesoul?
Nay.
Bruce Wong? Sorry. Bruce Wong? Linda Wong?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
So eight ayes, three noes. Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to make another motion to add to the resolution that we just adopted the names of the Manoa, Kamaki and Hawaii Kai neighborhood boards. Add them to Pearl City, Kailua and Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights.
Can you say that again?
As posted on the materials drive, I would like to make a motion to add a few other neighborhood boards to the named boards with concerns and opposition to Senate Bill 3202. And those boards are Manoa, Kamaki and Hawaii Kai. My second.
I see. Dylan, can you give us some advice on this one? Since we just passed this resolution, are we amending what we just passed or?
The proper procedure for any amendments like this would have been to make the amendment as the original motion was on the table. So the original motion was to adopt it as written. Then Michelle could have made a motion to amend that motion to include these. But it sounds like everyone might be on the same page. We don't need to overcomplicate it. We can, I would say, stick with the motion.
Okay, is there, is there anyone that would object adding those other boards? As Michelle, can you say them again? Which, what were they?
Those boards who have documented their concerns and opposition, as did Pearl City, have been Manoa, Kamaki and Hawaii Kai. And this information was put on the drive today.
Sure.
Michelle, just to clarify, those three boards that you're adding, they passed a resolution or a motion? It was official?
They, they have, two of them have official motions and, I'm sorry, resolutions. One had official testimony. That was their position. It expressed the same concerns and opposition that Pearl City, Kailua and Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights did in, in general. They were brief for documents, not as extensive or detailed, but still the same expression.
Thank you, Michelle. But just, just to be clear, you're saying that those three boards at their regular meeting made a motion and that motion passed for those three things?
Yes.
For those three boards, okay.
Okay, then I'm going to just say that we, we could do the same vote again and just say we're taking this up again. But given that there's no material change to this, except that these other three boards would be added, there's no sleight of hand here. Does anybody feel some sleight of hand? Okay, then with, with that, say it again? Yeah, let's do a roll call to add those three as a post motion amendment to go back to the original and then sort of just change it again. So adding in those three neighborhood boards.
Allen?
Aye.
Boito?
Nay.
Decker?
Aye.
Michelle, David? Hasina? Khan?
Aye.
Knight?
I'm gonna abstain because I'm kind of confused, but I support adding the people back in.
Mattson?
Aye.
Merchi?
Aye.
Velasco?
Aye.
Whitesoul?
Abstain.
Bruce Wong? Linda Wong?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Nine ayes, three abstain. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And if it turns out that this, there's no sleight of hand here. It's just adding those three things. No one else was opposed to this. So I will ask that we forward on that resolution with the three additional names to it. And anybody, or three additional boards that had passed that. If anybody has any questions, they can refer to the tape. But I don't, I don't think that there was any lack of clarity about the intent of the motion, the people that voted for it, or the addition of those three names. It was just a slight late addition.
Yes, I agree with everything you said. The only comment I just wanted to clarify was that by adding these names, it would be one thing if they adopt the resolution. But if one time you went to the meeting and you heard that someone from one of those boards provided testimony, that might not be the official stance of the board. So that was my only concern by adding these three boards was verifying that they had something documented, that they took that position. So as long as that's crystal clear, send us the final resolution and we'll distribute it for you.
Okay, okay. And yeah, if there's some further discrepancy, we could bring that up next month. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
Regarding documentation, the singular or testimony was, it was written point by point and signed by the chair of the board on behalf of the entire board. So despite it not being a so-called resolution, it was the same type of position that was taken. It was just in the format of a formal testimony to the legislature.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Again, this is not going anywhere. It's just a message to the governor and to our elected officials about this continuing issue. With that, we'll move on to the elected officials' reports. I don't know if we have anyone here from Ed Case's office. Let's just go down the list. And Senator Mazie Hirono or Senator Brian Schatz? And if you, any of you are pals with them, invite them to send somebody here. They used to in the olden days. Who knows, maybe Mazie will come by someday or Senator Schatz. Do we have the governor's representative here tonight? Okay. Lesihara told me he was not going to be here tonight. I don't think anyone from his office is here. Representative Kobayashi, I don't see Bert's name up there. Is there anyone from his office? Or Jackson Sayama?
Hello, Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, pretty quiet over here. I think everyone should have received, at least in St. Louis Heights, my end of session newsletter. So it just highlighted the overall state budget, some of the major bills that we passed, as well as some of the community projects and events that I've been part of. And as well as the CIP, the capital improvement projects for the school improvements that I was able to secure in the budget. Aside from that, there really hasn't been a whole lot in the district. I do want to encourage people though to, if they haven't already, visit the Festival of the Pacific events. They are free to the public. The one at the convention center is ongoing, I believe, until Friday, or I guess maybe Saturday. Opens around 10:00 a.m. and they have great displays as well as performances throughout the day. So if you haven't already, I do encourage you to go visit, check that out. With that, I'm open to questions.
Any questions for Representative Sayama? I did have one, Jackson, are your, are your offices open now? And if people want to start working with you on a bill, is it too early for? Well, I, how, how, how do you look at that? Or are you, is everything in a break for a while?
No, so, yeah. We are technically part-time, but our offices are still running. We may, we may not always be in the office. So if you plan on visiting, I'd encourage you to give me a call or give your senator or representative email or call beforehand to make sure that they're there. As regarding a timeline to craft legislation, you know, I guess we could start doing that now. It is a little early, but better early than late when we are focused on hiring staff or, you know, committee assignments and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, if you want, have ideas, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for coming tonight.
Of course.
Yes, the Pan Festival of the Pacific is going on for the next few days. It's a good point. Thanks for the reminder. Is anyone from Senator Stanley Chang's office here tonight?
Yes, hi. I, my name is Emily. I'm an intern from Senator Chang's office. So to start, I will be dropping some links into the chat for the monthly district newsletters and the signup link for the housing newsletter. For some updates, we've seen some recent power outages in Hawaii Kai and portions of East Honolulu. Copter inspections from Hiko revealed the cause of the outages involved an overgrowth of albizia trees that have encroached the transmissions lines along the base of the Koalau Mountains. Another one is after May 7th, 2025, all residents will need to get their real ID driver's license or state identification card to be able to board domestic flights or enter federal facilities. These real ID Hawaii driver's licenses will have a gold circle with a star outline in the center of the upper portion of the card. And to get a real ID compliant driver's license on Oahu, you would need to make an appointment up to six months prior to expiration at a driver licensing center. And these appointments can be made online at alohaq.org. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions for Emily?
I, I want to just comment, if you have a valid passport, isn't that sufficient for boarding?
I'm not too sure, but I think that the driver's license would be required for that. If you have like an old driver's license, then that would need to be renewed.
Oh, I think maybe you're thinking about getting the driver's license. Getting a driver's license, you need everything. I would go to Aloha Q and find out what you need to get a driver's license. But I believe you can board a plane with a valid passport or the gold star. Yeah, it's a good reminder. And I saw today, you can actually, if you have a passport, apply online to renew it if you've already got one. So thank you for coming tonight, Emily. I think there's a question from, a couple of questions here from Margaret, followed by Michelle.
Yes, I'd like to make sure that Emily understands that we are very disappointed with Stanley Chang's position with the Senate Bill 3202. Was really disappointing.
Okay, so you're just expressing your disappointment to Stanley Chang's office for the, his role in pushing 3202?
Terrible.
Okay.
He introduced it.
Exactly. He has no idea what it's going to do to the neighborhoods. And start fights between the city and the county and get all the developers suing the county because the site, they'll say that the state overrides any of the issues. And it's just, it's a mess.
He has another agenda. It's called Singapore density. And you can take that back to Senator Chang. I'd like to make a comment regarding the airline issue. The, I'm not sure if you were talking about just plane boarding or being able to get a ticket. You have to go through security check. But there is something called TSA Pre-Check that you can apply for. You can get that if you have a passport. It's much easier. They have stringent requirements that are very confusing right now. Even just to get a renewal, they make mistakes. And, but the easiest way that has been explained is just get a passport, go to your main post office or I'm not, you'd have to look it up or call TSA. But TSA Pre-Check is the easiest way. You can have a gold star on your driver's license. They let you right through with a gold star. But you need your own documentation, proof of citizenship, birth certificate, all of that to get pre-check. That's all.
Thanks, Michelle. And if you have TSA Pre-Check, you don't get nuked by the sub-millimeter waves in the body check. So it's another benefit. And you don't have to take off your shoes, apparently. So.
Not if you're over 70.
Really? How do they gauge that one? Would I pass? Okay, thank you, Emily, for coming tonight. And we will move on then to Tommy Waters' office. I know, Amanda, you've been, thank you so much for putting stuff in the chat as well. And take away what you have to share with us.
Sure, thank you so much. Hello, good evening again, everyone. So I have an update on the 2730 Date Street burned down house. The DPP issued the notice of violation back in August 2022. As I mentioned last meeting, that's still outstanding. So I just wanted to follow up and let you know about the outstanding fines. Initially, there was a $50 fine and a daily fine of $50 continues until the violation is corrected. So as of May 15, 2024, the total accrual was $47,150. And then on May 14, 2024, the city placed a lien, filed a lien against the property recorded at the State Bureau of Conveniences. So that's basically how the DPP is enforcing that violation. And ultimately, we hope, you know, to see some action by the property owner. Wanted to give you a few updates on bills and resolutions that passed earlier this month at the full council meeting. The first, I know we've had some lively discussion about salaries. And so the first one I want to mention is Resolution 24-105, introduced by Chair Waters. And this initiates amendments to the revised charter relating to salaries. The Salary Commission, just a quick note, was initially approved in 1984 by voters with the sole purpose of settling salaries for the mayors, council members and the prosecuting attorney's office, prosecuting attorney rather, and then later. attorney's office, prosecuting attorney rather, and then later extended to include all appointed city officials. This proposed amendment will be on the November 5th general election ballot. Um, and it basically aims to cap annual salary increase for council members at 5% using a formula for all collective bargaining. Um, so I think that's something that's, um, appreciated by a lot of the folks that took up issue with the, the previous salary commission discussion. Um, the next one is Bill 52 I mentioned previously, uh, this relates to large detached dwellings, also known as monster homes in some cases. This passed third and final reading at the council meeting and it increases penalty for a person to construct or convert a construct, a structure in violation of the L U O. And it basically increases the, um, the penalties. So initially, uh, previously the initial fine was $5,000, up to $5,000 per day. Um, and then it's increased to $25,000 initial fine and up to $10,000 per day. Um, so that's pretty significant and we hope to help, you know, to see that help further deter this kind of thing. Um, the next one is Bill 6, also sort of related, um, but more so to just permitting. Uh, this one is more specific to, uh, stop work order. So currently, um, building permits are required to be posted on any construction site. Uh, this bill requires that stop work orders are posted as well when appropriate. Previously they, they weren't, it wasn't required. And so we had a lot of confusion in our communities about, you know, is construction supposed to be happening? I thought they were on a stop work order. What happened? Um, so this just improves public notification by requiring the posting of the stop work orders. Um, the next item I have is the Vision Zero Action Plan, which we've already kind of discussed. I put the link in the chat earlier. Um, and again, this sort of just identifies high injury traffic corridors and intersections, including several along Kapo Hulu and Kalakaua avenues. Um, and I took a quick look earlier at the list and it does include the intersections that you folks were talking about, um, earlier in the meeting. Um, it outlines strategies for improvements and then there will be separate projects for each specific area to include planning, design and additional community engagement at that time. I just wanted to, uh, also go over a few of our CIP budget highlights sort of specific to this area. Um, we have in the budget, $22 million for renovation of recreational facilities, including reconstruction of the walkway at Queens Beach. Um, again, that's including, so that's actually like all the, the recreational facilities island wide that that's included. That's why it's such a high dollar amount. There's also 300,000 in, uh, for Waikiki Surf Rocks, another 300,000 for Waikiki Ward Memorial Complex. There's 125,000, um, in with Department of Enterprise Services, uh, improvements, including Waikiki Shell and the Blaisdell. There's, uh, $770,000 for the Hawaii Island exhibit at the zoo. Another $2 million for the veterinary clinic at the zoo. And then another $2 million, um, for general zoo improvements. And there was about $400,000 for the Diamond Head Sewers Improvement District Project. Um, $1 million for the Alawai Community Park Kanu Halau and another $300,000 for the clubhouse. And then separately, $1 million for the Alawai Neighborhood Park, uh, Kanu Halau. And then beyond that, um, again, these are just some highlights specific to this area. Other areas, uh, priorities of course include public safety, housing and establishing a new ocean safety department. And next month, we're going to come out with, um, a fuller budget highlights. Um, so they'll be much more included in there. And that's all I have for you folks this evening. If you have any questions, I might be able to answer. Um, otherwise I'd be happy to take them back.
Thank you, Amanda. I think there are a couple of questions. I see Linda.
Um, thank you. Um, I was wondering if you saw, uh, Dave Oshiro's, uh, article in the column in the, uh, Star Bulletin about, uh, the, uh, the, the thing that we can vote on in the charter, uh, and when we vote, it's, um, after the fact that the 64% pay raise for the city council, um, is, is already gone through. So that, that what they're putting on the ballot is after the fact of that and will not change anything. It's only going forward that the, uh, city council will not give its, you know, give themselves a vote that's more than whatever it says.
Yes, that's accurate. Um, there's nothing that can be done to change the, the 64%, but because of the controversy around the entire issue, you know, and Chair talked a lot about this and, and, and all of the hearings that took place that this should go back to the voters. Um, the voters established this system to begin with. And if the voters think that there needs to be change, which he agrees with, we need to put it back to the voters to decide. Um, and there was a lot of discussion around what an appropriate cap should be. And there was consensus on the 5%. So that's what's moving forward.
Thank you. And, uh, Margaret?
Hi. Um, can we insist that the complete streets, zero vision allotted monies only be spent on a full EIS for the proposed $80 million bridge? I know that you guys are in the last meeting, they allocated the funds for that $63 million or something like that? That, forget it. You know, you guys, it's like, we don't have the money and we don't need a bridge like that. And complete streets is AKA or NK, now known as Zero Vision, is like just moving ahead. And it's not fair. We don't need it. We can't afford it. We don't need Alawai closed down. Leave Alawai alone. It's perfect as is. It's a major thoroughfare for many communities. And we don't need anything done to it. And to double bike lanes is crazy. That street is too important for everyone coming off, especially with all the construction on Kapialani. You've got a new building going up that they held in, that they snuck in. I mean, it's just our traffic. They're not, they don't care about our quality of life. You know, the, the residents, it's just not fair. I know you know that, but it has to be on the record somewhere. Because maybe give them money for, you know, to do an EIS, but it's like, they shouldn't be moving forward on this at all. It's, they've already started spending the $25 million federal money, which is just like what happened with rail. And we just don't need it. We don't want it. And we need that street. We need the Alawai. Sorry for being such a snot.
Thank you, Margaret. No worries. I hear you.
Thanks, Margaret. And Michelle?
Uh, yes, I have a question about the Kanu Halau. Um, uh, and Amanda, I want to thank you so much for your thoroughness and your dedication and all the details you provide to us. Uh, it's, it's very valuable for the board member to have all the information you're able to quickly access for us, especially on the chat. Um, but the Kanu Halau, I'm, I'm not sure, is this the Kanu Halau, uh, are these funds for the Kanu Halau with the historic Malia canoe, the Hawaiian canoe, or the historic, uh, um, Kanu Halau near McCully Bridge?
So sorry, um, it, it, it's for both parks. So yes, it includes the Malia. I'm sorry, what was the other one you said?
Uh, the, it's very historic, uh, Kanu Halau, uh, near, right next to McCully Bridge.
Yes.
With the roof that's been rotting and all the benign neglect that previous administrations have inflicted on this, uh, very historic building and site. Are there funds going toward improving and restoring that as well?
Yes, yes, that's, that's exactly what it's for. Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. I applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, for all that. And Noella, you have a quick question?
Uh, yes. Um, hi. Thank you, Amanda, for your presentation. Um, regarding the, uh, Date Street, the two houses, the burnt houses and stuff, do you know what year they caught on fire? And, uh, secondly, what will be, will it become a vacant lot? Um, what is the overall plans for that area? Thank you very much.
Hi, Noella. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I believe it was 2020 earlier in that year that it actually burned down. Um, and then it was later that year that DPP first issued the violation. You know, we, um, really don't have any authority per se on exactly what happens to it. It's still privately owned. Um, although, you know, with the fines ever increasing, um, I'll, I'll say that potentially if, if the, you know, if the violations aren't corrected and the fines accrue enough, I, I suppose the, the city could foreclose on it. Um, but I think we're quite a ways away from that discussion.
Have you folks contacted the owners of that property?
You know, I myself have not. Our office has not. Um, we, this property, this area was previously located in Council District Five. And so, um, this issue is sort of new to me, just in terms of like, you know, figuring out the background and what's happening with it. Um, obviously the DPP has contacted the property owner numerous times and that's why it's, you know, sort of reached the point that it's at. Um, but in any case, you know, the city's intent or will is never to take someone's property. You know, they always want to give every, you know, opportunity for, for violations to be corrected. Um, so the fines will just continue. Um, I, again, I said that there was a lien filed against the property and as well as, you know, um, stoppers on like driver's licenses and, um,
Right. And that, good, because that's the way to do it. But, uh, the other question I have for you, Ms. Amanda, thank you so much for taking them, is when is the proposed time to raise this property down to the ground and get rid of it? Is there anything in the timeline regarding this? It's good that you're telling us that this has been looked at and it needs to be rectified. So with that said, do you have any sort of timeline, uh, with the ci- is the city and county or state so that we in the, um, neighborhood area, me, um, can know? Cause it is an eyesore and, uh, it was unfortunate, but what is the timeline to take that property completely down? And who's in charge, state or city and county?
Well, right now neither owns it. It's still privately owned. So there is no timeline as far as we're concerned. We don't see any action, you know, anything happening at the property. I checked for building permits. There's, I found no applications in the pipeline for, for any demolition or alterations or new builds or anything. So for now, the fines will continue until there's some, you know, action being made by the property owner to correct it. And again, I don't think we'll reach the point of, you know, the city taking the property unless it's through foreclosure, if it reaches sort of that, that level. Um, but right now the city wouldn't take any action to necessarily, um, condemn it. We would have to go through this process first through the DPP.
A very good, thank you so much for your information. I really appreciate it. Would you be so kind as to send anything that comes down the pike with that for our neighborhood board, uh, in the link? We would really appreciate it. Just that we're abreast of, you know, all that's being done to, you know, beautify Date Street because it is an eyesore. Thank you so very much.
Sure. Happy to. Thank you.
Allah. Thank you, Amanda. And I just had a quick question. As you mentioned that there was a change between District Four and Five, does in fact, what is the boundary of where Tommy's ends and Calvin's begins?
Um, it is Kapialani, um, Kalakaua and Alawai. So those are sort of the, the boundaries in that area. It runs right down.
The canal?
Yeah.
Or?
Yes.
Or does it go across the canal as well? Over to Kapialani, you said? Okay.
Yeah, Kapialani is, is where it ends.
And everything behind Safeway?
Everything behind Safeway is, oh, that's a good question. I'm not sure. Um, I think it's us, but I'll, I'll double check.
Okay. And with that, I know we just have a few minutes left. Um, Andrew, uh, thank you very much, Amanda, for coming today. And Andrew, you want to take it away for Calvin Seay's office?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Andrew from Councilmember Seay's office here. I'll be presenting the updates tonight. Councilmember Seay's June 2024 newsletter is in the chat along with other helpful links. Um, first, we received the constituent request for a no parking anytime sign at the west corner of the Allen Caster and Migrate, uh, street. Our office has put in a request for an evaluation and installation of a sign at the indicated location. Um, next, we received reports of fallen signs at the St. Louis Heights Drive and Kami Naka Drive intersection. Um, constituents report that they were taken away for repair and never returned. Um, our office put in a request for the reinstallation of the street signs and it was referred to the Department of Facility Maintenance on June 12. Um, lastly, we've been working with the St. Louis Heights Community Association on certain no parking signs that were requested to be installed earlier this year. Um, it seems that one of those signs was installed in an incorrect location. Um, we're currently working with the constituent on supporting documents to attach in the modification request. Um, other, other than that, that's all from me. Um, if there's any questions, comments or concerns, I'll be happy to forward them to Councilmember Seay.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any questions for Andrew from Councilmember Seay's office? Have you taken over for Melvia then 100%?
Um, yes. Chair Welch.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And, uh, thank you for sticking around, uh, for tonight. Um, we, uh, Noella, do you have a question? Or is that, you, did you leave your hand up from before? I think it might be a ghost hand there, leftover. What's the term for that leftover hand? There's probably some new term. Okay, assuming not, then we may get done with our agenda. I don't know. Are you guys saying you want to take bets on it? Uh, we didn't have any committee reports, so we can skip right down to board business to sub-district boards. Julia Allen for St. Louis Heights, Sub-District One.
The next St. Louis Heights Community Association meeting will be Monday, July 8th at 7:00 PM at Hokelani Elementary School.
Are the apart- and are the apartments at Shamanad right there, are those, is that part of St. Louis Heights Community Association? Do you know?
They normally don't participate. I guess they would be considered part of it, but, um, I'm not, and I think at one time somebody did come over to our meetings, but I don't think recently at all they haven't shown up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. We don't have anyone for Kapo Hulu, Sub-District Two, but if anyone would like to take that on, then you're welcome to do that. And, uh, Linda Wong, Sub-District Three, Diamond Head, do you have anything for us? We will take that as a gentle no. I'll move on to the approval of the draft meeting minutes. We did not-
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, jumping back to, uh, committee reports, traffic and public safety. We had quite a discussion on, uh, the street and public safety issues tonight. Um, and also, uh, public safety includes the fire threats, especially around Diamond Head. And we're getting, uh, we're trying to seek more information from the fire department in detailed, uh,
chart reports, not just mapping. I looked on the map. It didn't look very substantial. But their charts are very detailed and we did receive one chart that was very informative for February through mid-April, our April meeting. We haven't received anything since we've requested.
Okay, you just.
We now, we now have an email into the fire chief as of today to follow up on this. So traffic and public safety, Margaret's committee, and you mentioned a meeting would be scheduled. Would, do you have any idea when that would be?
No, but it's coming up soon. So I'll let everybody know. I'll send out a, a notice and, and put it on our public drive for those of us that are interested in attending that. And that can be put on the agenda as well, the, the fire hazards. And yeah, thanks for going back to that for a second. I, I would like to ask Margaret and Dan and/or Dan for the Parks and Recreation Committee to call a meeting for issues with parks and recreation in our area, especially disposition of this new lot where the, all the equipment has been removed at the entrance to the Alaway Golf Course. So I'll just leave that out there and we can hopefully get a meeting before our next one as well.
Mr. Chair, I also have a question regarding your last comment.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a concern, there was the draft environmental assessment for the nursery actually, the nursery building for horticulture being relocated from the existing old building to a new building adjacent to the Diamond Head Tennis Courts. And the question of the heavy equipment and trucks that service the entire island being relocated out of Kapilani Park Trust Land, which the judge, I, it was questioned by the court because this, this was a city use, not a, a specific park use. The nursery was allowed to stay, to grow plants. But the trucks are to be relocated. Now, this was in 1991 and it's now 2024. And the latest we've heard is that Director Parks may be eyeing the Alaway Golf Course where we wanted all those containers removed for state, for the truck staging area. Where the most ideal location would be under the freeway where they have a little motor licensing, motor, I'm sorry, motorcycle licensing. I don't know, a little office that's taking up all that room. So I think our board needs to take this up as a concern that we may, they may be replacing one eyesore for another. And definitely, urban forestry is very important. They need access to Kapilani Park, to Alamoana Park, and all around the island. So near the freeway would be the ideal location, not in another green open space.
Yes, and I think.
Another parks and recreation issue.
Absolutely. And I think our board passed something unanimously to say that it, any use of that should be consistent with parks and no buildings and no maintenance yards. I think that we're clear on that, but it's a good point to bring up. Well, if you bet that we were going to finish everything on our agenda, then you lost. So we are not going to finish everything on our agenda tonight. We did a very good job though. I appreciate everybody. With all your, your aloha you showed during the meeting, I don't know if there's any reports for board members at other meetings or public meetings, but we will have our next meeting July 11th, right here, 6 o'clock or on WebEx. Again, the candidates are going to have a forum with Civil Beat and with PBS. Go online and find that. With that, I will wish you all a very happy, what's today? Rest of Pacific Festival and what do we got? A holiday next week. It's Juneteenth. And then the 4th of July. So after that, we will regroup. Go ahead.
Sorry, one last comment. Yeah, the agenda was posted before this was finalized. But I believe there's a conflict with the schedule for this ballroom. So the next meeting and then maybe several after will be relocated to Paki Hala.
Paki Hala next month. Yeah, starting July. Thank you for the clarification. And with that, we're at 8:59 T-Mobile time, so I will adjourn the meeting and wish you all a good night. Allah.
Mahalo for a great meeting, Chair Winston.